Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of August, or sorry, October 28th, 2025. It's 5:00 PM. We'll move into our first appointment this evening. We have Brian McHugh from the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority to update us on the public, update the public on the status of the town's fiscal year 2024 Mass Community CDBG Housing Rehab Program. This is a public hearing, so I will call the public hearing to order. And welcome, Brian.
Great. Well, thank you for having me. Clint said, I'm Brian McHugh, Director of Community Development, Franklin County Regional Housing Redevelopment Authority. I'm here to talk about the current FY24 Community Development Black Grant, as Clint said. You are the lead community for, the other two communities are Colrain and Ashfield. The, we didn't sign contract, we didn't sign contracts with the state until about a year ago. And then we have an up, we have a sort of, we ramp up the program. And so we really, you know, we send out applications to homeowners for the first three months, get applications in, process them. And then we're not really going out to projects until like the first of the year, you know, so. And we, and as people are, as are approved, we go out and do the inspections, do the write-ups of these projects and put them out to bid. So it is always a little slow-going at first with these, these programs. We've been running them for, since the early eighties. And regional grants, regional programs usually take about two years to complete. So they'll, we'll ask for an extension on this current grant probably at the end of the year. They give us an 18-month implementation period, which started last, that was past July, but the one before it, even though the contracts weren't signed until October. So we're always like six months behind when we can really get going, even though the beginning date is always July 1st. So it'll go till the end of this year. We'll probably, we'll ask for an extension, usually probably through the end of June. And we may need to ask for another extension at that point. But we do, you know, this is just to go over what we have. And one of the, the original grant funds for the rehab was a million, $30,000. There was, at the time of the grant award, there's a, well, between the grant award and now, there's been $128,000 in what they call program income. And that's from previous loans, from rehab loans that get paid back to the towns. It goes into the grants and then we're mandated to spend that money first. So sometimes we're sort of spinning our wheels because we get money, we get a payoff. We never know when a payoff is going to come in. Suddenly we get a $50,000 payoff from a loan. Then we have to spend that next. So it slows us down from sending grant funds. And they're looking at, you know, what, you know, your grant funds always, they don't necessarily take into consideration what you have in program income. So we've had to spend some of that first. We've committed in, in the, in the towns, we committed $35,000 in program income in Buckland. Colrain, very little. Ashfield, about $30,000. Grant funds committed in, in Buckland are $110,000 so far. Colrain, we have nothing there right yet. We have two very large projects that would exceed, well exceed the loan cap, which is $70,000 per, per household. We are able to go for waivers for certain projects. We've been very successful in doing that to exceed the amount of the loan cap. But these two projects are probably, one of them's over $200,000 itself. Another one would be about $150,000. And the owners are reluctant to borrow that money because the way that it works is they, the money is loaned to them. It gets recorded against a property. It does go away over the course of 15 years. But you're, you know, there's a declining balance, but that's a big chunk to take off, especially for this one particular household that has people that are in their late eighties and they're not, they're not expecting that, you know, they're like, we're not going to be around in 15 years and not owe anything on this. So they're, they're, you know, we're trying to work, maybe doing some emergency repairs at that particular house. But Colrain, we just happened to get in a couple, couple project, a couple applicants that were, just needed a lot of work.
Am I asking like what kind of work that needs to be done?
Uh, it's rewiring. One, this one particular house, I can't tell you where it is or who it is, but of course, I know, you're not asking that, I know. But it's rewiring the entire house. This is, and it's a 14-room house that, yeah, and it's like.
Knob and tube.
It's all, it's, it's some of the worst I've seen. I, I, I've been doing this since 1990. And honestly, this has been, it was one of the ones we were like, we gotta do something about this right away, you know? They don't have any insulation in the house, old windows, there's lead paint. We have to address lead paint whether there's children living there or not, you know, it's, the money comes down through HUD and it's a lead, HUD's, HUD's let's say housing rule that we're beholden to. So, so we have to do a bunch of lead work there. Also structural repairs. A roof, a leaking roof, slate roof. It's just, it's just the magnitude of it, you know, everything at, you know, it's just so, it's a big house that everything costs a lot of money to do at that house. So that's, that's.
I feel bad. There's a, there'll be a couple living here in that condition.
I know, I know, I know. We're, we, you know, we have good relationships with different services, you know, like elder services or, you know, so in this case, LifePath is involved as an advocate for them and also Community Action, their, their weatherization program. So it's looking like they'll be able to do some stuff, we'll be able to do some stuff, make it safe for them at least. I don't know that we'll be able to do the whole project, but we can just be sure that they're safe and warm. That's, that's our goal for that particular child.
Excellent goal.
And so, and then Asheville has a $108,000 so far. We have a little, there's a breakdown, you have the breakdown there, I think, that, I don't have to go over everything. But you know, we've, there's just been one house that's been completed. And there's, well, actually that's two now because one just got done this week. 300 construction, units and scoping and bidding, that's us doing, going out and doing the inspections, doing the, the work write-ups for these jobs and putting them out to bid. Then we have other ones that are applications in review. So right now, there's, it'll be, there's 14 out of the 16-unit goal right now. And we're, we're, we're taking applications in a rolling basis. We may need some more people. So if there's, if, I think it's on your website, I believe, and it's on Hiller Towns' website. But sometimes we have to do a mailing, let's say, to a town. So we have, we get to the tail end of a, of a grant, we have some money left. We might want to do some kind of mailing. Also, we often will do, put it out with tax bills, you know, a little thing in the tax bills, if that's accessible to the towns. But anyway, so, so it is, like I said, it's slow-going for housing rehab. It's just, that's the way it is in the state, you know? We're, I think we're pretty good at it. They've asked us to do a training for other municipalities and how we run our, our housing rehab program. So I think we're in good standing, but they, they just, the state knows that it takes time to get these, these things done. There's usually like a two-year period for, for, for a regional housing rehab program. There's some, some beneficiaries, just statistics down at the bottom of this, I won't go over all those. But we keep track of all the beneficiaries and all, all the projects we do and we have to report them to HUD. So that's, you know, that's just the stuff on the bottom there. If anybody has any questions, that's just giving you, we have to hold a pub, a second public hearing when we're doing these programs or that, when you get a grant. The first one was before the grant application was submitted, which we did last year. And then this is the second one, so.
No, I mean, it looks like, you know, it looks like we're certainly, the town of Buckland at least is definitely taking advantage of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
You know, we've, we've got, it looks like eight units going right now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and we usually base, I can't remember how it, I don't have the breakdown, but when we put together a grant application, oftentimes one, we have unit goals, you know? So 16 units overall in a town, in a, like, regional application. And we might have done, I don't have it here, and we might have said we were going to do eight in Buckland and four in four in the other towns. And it's always based on who we have on, on a waitlist, who's inquired. And every call we, every call that comes in goes into a log for us, you know? And we might not go back, we might not have any money in that town for four or five years. But we always reach out to them when we're getting close to maybe, you know, we have enough people inquiring, enough people on a waitlist to put together a grant application. Then we sort of ref, we refresh the, the waitlist. So, and again, we just base our unit goals on what we see as a need in each of the towns. And I think Buckland was the one that had the, that showed the more need as far as people on the waitlist go, you know, so.
Great. We have this program.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's been a successful program for many years and it's great to continue to be able to help people. We do, we have a challenge in that it's hard to get contractors sometimes to bid on these jobs. We're using fewer contractors than we used to, partly because they gotta work with a program, you know? We ask for paperwork and we have, there's oversight, you know, and it's all, you know, it's like sometimes the private sector is, is better for somebody. So, and also they have to be certified in let's say work practices. So there's training for that. And some of them just say, uh, that's okay, you're, you're, I'm fine or whatever. So that, that does contribute to us, to sort of the, you know, how long it takes to do things. Because we might have four or five contractors that are always being on our jobs. And it's like, well, I can't look at that one because I got these two lined up already. So it sort of puts us behind a little bit. But in the end, I feel like we, we accomplished what we, what we set out to do.
Excellent. Great.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I got, all right?
That's a lot. Thank you.
Right. Here we can close the hearing and call the.
We'll move to close the public hearing for the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, great. Thank you. All right.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
It's like 12 past.
5:11.
5:11.
Yeah, they'll have other stuff to fill in.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got plenty. This is where we, this is where we get the other stuff done. Our next appointment's not till 5:30, so we'll move into our first agenda item. Excuse me. We have a request from Marcus Fisher to be appointed to fill the unexpired term of Arthur Samuelson on the cultural council. This term would expire on November 25th of 2027.
So one quick little addition there. When I got the request from Marcus, I reached out to our town clerk to see if Arthur had ever filed a, his request to, you know, leave. He hadn't. So she did have an email from him. So I guess first we should probably accept the resignation of Arthur Samuelson. He moved out of town.
Gotcha.
So, just to keep it clean.
I will move to accept the resignation of Arthur Samuelson from the cultural council.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll also move to request that Marcus Fisher be appointed to fill that unexpired term for, for the cultural council expiring November of 2027.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a request from Janet Sinclair to be appointed to the Energy Committee. So I think we had a couple of questions on that. Is, is there a opening on the Energy Committee?
So I had inquired of our town clerk just to see, this is, this is kind of an area where there's a lot of committees that don't give number allowed, and this is one of them. We can't find that there's actually like a, five, is five enough? Is five a full committee or can they're kind of like the rec committee, you know, can you add more people? And this one appears to be that way. So she couldn't really give me a definitive response as to whether there was an opening because she doesn't see where it tells what the number is for that committee.
How many people are on that committee now?
I believe there's five at this point.
Yeah, because usually there's voting going on for these committees. So you can't really have a even number.
Right. I could definitely follow back up with Alicia on that to be sure, to see who the current member is.
I'd like to look back into what we talked about at one time, the idea of you shouldn't belong to more than one committee.
Right. I mean, the, the application itself does mention that you shouldn't be on more than one.
Right. Maybe we.
Whether that's a, that says a general, what did it say? Have you have the sheet in front of you?
General policy is to appoint individuals to no more than one permanent committee at a time.
Right. So whether the person, if they are on more than one committee, would then have to choose which committee? If that's something you want me to.
Well, do we get enough volunteers? And here's another thing, do we get enough volunteers to volunteer to be on these committees? That we don't want to, also get some upset, well, you know, we seem like we are getting enough, that's.
We have a few openings, a few empty seats, but I wasn't aware that there was an open, like an opening per se on the Energy Committee. But I also don't know if there's a cap on the number of people that can serve on that committee. I could, I can do some more research on that.
Yeah, so I think we tabled this request at this point. I, I think maybe we should check in with the Energy Committee. Find out if they want more people on their committee at this point. And maybe look into, if that's a town bylaw, then it's something we probably ought to look further into as well for being on more than one.
It's not a bylaw, but we can certainly find out if there's a general, a general policy on, like you're saying, an odd number. Does make sense. I mean, they are just an advisory committee. They're not a, you know, I mean, I, they could maybe vote to recommend something. But it's not like the Board of Health that has that kind of.
I'm putting down the administrative, administrator is going to be looking into it. So, okay?
Certainly.
Comfort with that? Yeah, okay. I just want to be sure. I don't want to.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do some more, some more inquiry on that.
We want to be a little more solid.
Sure.
All right. Our next agenda is we have a request to transfer the liquor license back to Cafe Martin for the DBA West End Pub.
So you should have a letter.
Very sad to see that fall through.
A number of people are.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there is a letter. I spoke with the ABCC. I guess this does happen from time to time, not very often, a couple times a year. He said essentially both parties had to have a letter drawn up stating that the sale did not happen. And upon getting that signature, the signed letter, I was, I needed to put together the licensing authority certification listing that the sale fell through and asking that it be returned back to West End Pub, Cafe Martin. And then that business needs to, in November, which next month you're going to be asked to do all the renewals. They need to renew that license next month as well. And then it will be locked in again back in his name.
We'll make a motion to transfer the liquor license back to Cafe Martin, DBA the West End Pub.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How much does a liquor license cost anyway?
Depends on which type you're getting. For an all-alcoholic, this I believe it's a thousand. Next, next month you'll learn all about that. You'll have all the renewals.
Okay.
All right. And then our last agenda item, we have the, the review for the special town meeting warrant. We need to close that warrant out. I had it here. Where did I put it? I think that's the one on the fancy paper.
We, well, that's one version of it is on the special on the fancy paper. But I think I put a copy in the back and it's there for the minute to find it.
So the special town meeting will be taking place at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 18th. That meeting will be here at the town hall. It looks like we have four articles up for that evening. Do you want me to read through them or do you want to read them?
You can read them. So at this point, I have some general information on them as we get closer and start nailing down numbers and sources. We'll have more information at your next meeting where you will all vote to decide if you support the article.
I see.
This is just the posting of the warrant. So it doesn't matter if you want to go over them. I can add what I know about each one of them.
Yeah, so we just, we don't have the numbers yet?
Not, not, right. We're waiting on free cash to be certified and so forth.
Okay.
Mike assures us that by the 20, by the, by the 18th, it will be good to go.
Okay.
So.
So we don't have to do anything about the $15,000 that was a match for the.
That will be part of the, the motion when we go, like, for example, Article One, which is for the Smith vocational student that we didn't know about. Potential funding sources could be a transfer from that fund.
To explain to our audience was, because the.
They did not have the funds in hand. It was a matching.
Was a matching one and the state required more.
They wanted the money upfront in order to reimburse them a grant, not a matching grant. But they had to show that they had the funds upfront. They didn't have the full funds. They had half theirs, the $12,500. So that was the first article is for the Smith Volk student. The second article is, so we have some outstanding. We have, we are in the process of trying to get a refund, a solar tax credit back from the federal government for the solar that was installed at the wastewater treatment facility. Because we're a town and we don't file a federal tax return, it's been a bit of a challenge. We are now working with an accountant who says he can help us with this process and it is in his hands at this point. But in the meantime, we have a deficit which does hit our free cash. So the idea is to fund that deficit through a funding source, whether it be retained earnings because this is for the wastewater treatment facility. And then once we receive a refund back, we're still not 100% certain it's all going to work out. But we're trying to remain optimistic for that. And then.
Are we back up and running on that?
Yes. Yes. Definitely back up and running. Yep. And then Article Three is a potential unpaid bill. I'm working through that. We just heard from our diesel fuel company that there may be a bill that was missed last fiscal year. So that's what Article Three is. And Article Four, we had authorized a loan up to $150,000 for the Avery Road project that was never actually issued. So we now need to vote to rescind that vote for that borrowing authorization to get that off of our.
We don't need to borrow it.
Right. So that's in a nutshell what we're looking at for special town meeting.
Okay.
We will revisit this again as we get closer.
So I will make a motion to close the warrant and accept the articles for the special town meeting for November 18th.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Linda, are we waiting on anybody else?
Well, we, we, we'd be sent on notices for 5:30.
Okay.
But Mike, I don't know how, if Mike wants to.
How do you want to?
I have boards or I can do it. Whatever's easier.
Well, if you can, I can turn that on if you can access your email or however your files are set up, we could potentially try that. I also have your large, unless probably not, you probably have new updated. I still have your plans out here from the last time.
You have cameras in here, so I can just put the board in the corner if that works.
Okay, that's fine. That works.
Then I can hand out anyways.
Okay.
Okay. Sue likes that idea, so we will go with that. Whatever Mrs. Roberts wants.
If you want, we can give you a couple of minutes to get set up and rolling and we'll just, we'll keep hammering on, you know, getting through.
Wasn't that in a movie?
What Mrs. Roberts wants.
Nobody, no, nobody put Mrs. Roberts in the corner. Yeah, baby.
Same, same deal. That's right. One of my favorites.
We don't have any contract or grant documents to sign. No permits and licenses.
Yes.
Minutes, we have minutes from our October 7th. I think that must have really stressed you out, Mary. I'll move to approve the minutes of October 7th, written.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have our vendor and payroll warrant, which is 2609. I'll move to accept the both vendor and payroll warrants.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item's not reasonably anticipated by chair. I don't have anything. Any Select Board member concerns?
I did attend a meeting at the Procox Council last week. And the main discussion was about the health insurance and the rise in costs. And, you know, people were very, very frustrated and there's no solution right now. I did give Pam some slides that they had to show alternatives, but nothing's being resolved right now, so.
Yeah. I attended a meeting yesterday, a Zoom meeting, that was had, it was, the Lieutenant Governor actually was the Speaker. You know, the GIC is an option, but also a lot of deadlines to meet. And as a small town, we don't really know what our runoffs are or what our claims history is because we can't get that information because we're so small. It can be a violation of the HIPAA.
Oh, dear.
So for small towns, we're kind of a little bit in a bind.
How do they expect us to make a decision on something like that if we don't know what the numbers would be going into it?
Exactly. So Larry Langford has been attending the meetings, Finance Committee, Kara's been attending, I've been attending. So far, we're still sort of all feeling like, let's give HCGIT a chance. Just because right now I don't feel that we have enough information. And I don't want to really jump the gun necessarily because what I'm hearing from GIC yesterday is that they're going to be seeing double-digit increases next year as well. And we'll be losing the plans that we have. They don't offer some of the same, you know, they don't offer the lacrosse, the shield. I think some of your choices for doctors are not necessarily geared to the western part of the state. So anyway, we're kind of just watching and waiting and, and we did have enough funding in our current budget to absorb the cost. So we don't have that on the warrant for the special town meeting. We were able to find the money.
We can be careful with the federal government. Here today, gone tomorrow, and it comes back and may go again. So we just got to, yeah, it's going to be.
We're just going to hope.
We're just going to have to hope.
It's a gamble. And no matter how you look at it, it's a gamble. So.
The problem is, is, you know, the, the state's not willing to bail out the HCGIT.
Right, because it's not a state.
But they're willing to be out, they're willing to bail out GIC.
Because that's their state.
Correct.
Yeah. But the deadline is December 1st and there's no way, I don't see how you would get, meet that deadline. I don't want to rush either and, and have it be worse.
Plus they still don't have the full costs.
Right.
It was the, the change in the drug program was, it started October 1st, but they don't have the most recent numbers of what increases. This was the drugs, medication people were taking to, for weight reduction.
That's one of them. There's, it's a lot of the expensive drugs, like all the ads you see on TV. Like those are, people are wanting them because they're seeing them and it's, they're out there. So definitely that's one factor.
Yeah, can't be the $300 pill Tylenol is at bill.
Could be that. Sure.
All right. Well, I would say pretty much set up here and we got about 6:30, so we won't, we'll save your research for last.
Okay. Great.
We'll move into our 5:30 appointment. We have Linda Overing from Breezeway Farm Consulting and also Mike Carter from GCG Associates. This for a input forum regarding planning for potential future improvements on Ashfield Street, Bray Road, and Monroe and Cradav. Is this a public meeting or?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, so it's.
It's not a formal, you don't have to be charged. I did bring a signing sheet because it's helpful if we throw future applications to show who attended. So if you pass that around, it'd be great. That we will hear in May, talking about this as a potential project that was approved by UHL.
Not sure if they're going to be able to hear you. If I could just get you, no, for the microphone.
Microphone, sure. Yeah.
Move that chair, that table a little. They're not sitting on their lap back there.
We were, uh, we had a meeting here in May when we asked EOHLC for permission to use some money left over. From um the Depot Street project for this purpose of coming up with designs for Monroe and Crad. Uh, sections of Ashfield and Bray Road. And in that, we, we talked about how there'd be like probably a couple of meetings with the public uh for the, with the engineer, which is GCG Associates. And this is the first of the meetings. Um, Mike has been doing some research and about the, the properties that are involved. And has come up with some preliminary recommendations about the way to go, to go forward. And tonight, we wanna hear from residents and property owners reacting to what Mike is presenting. With the idea that in, he would take back that feedback, um, come back in approximately a month. Um, with hopefully a final design, again for you and the residents to react to. On the idea is to have all this done by the end of December, the, just the design work. With the idea that it'll be available if you decide in the future to apply for a CDBG grant or other grant sources to fund these improvements. You've got something already to go. So I'm getting this point, I'll just turn it over to Mike who's.
There's a hand out here. It's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay.
It's on the board up there.
Got a couple more that just, just came in.
So um, my name is Mike Carter, most GCG Associates with the Civil Judiciary Department. What we've done at this point, um, we've met with the different departments for the water and the sewer and the highway and the, and. Kinda get a, go over the scope and Linda. So the project consists of Bray Road, Ashfield Street, part of Ashfield Street, I should say, Cradav, Monroe Ave. And that, you basically have a plan that shows at the top. Starts at where the water main ends up on Bray Hill Road, which is about number forty Bray Hill. If you go left, left to right, you're coming down the hill and then you see you come down to the next section below. And that's where it intersects with Ashfield Street and. And then continues down Ashfield Street down to where the previous CDBG project identified. And what you, what you're looking at is where you see the gray shaded area, that's where we would reconstruct the roadway, rebuild it, reshape it. And I'll go, and when you see the blue, green, or red, those are where we're making, we propose at this time based upon our sidewalk. Where we would make the proposed utility improvements. Blue being water, there's quite a bit of water on Bray Road. If we replace the whole water main on Bray Road, um, which is over two thousand feet. And then the, the red that you see on Bray Road, those are cross drains. Basically, there's, there's called drainlets on the uphill side. Collect the water in a swale and then send it down across the road. Um, the red ones are the ones that we're proposing to replace. They're um, they're corrugated metal pipe. And they're of an age where the bottoms got to disappear. So it's a good time to do it. There's one that's a forty-eight inch. And we still want to investigate because that's a pretty significant size and I wanna make sure that that's what we wanna do there.
Now where's that one located? Okay, I don't want.
I'll come back to that when we get into little details. I don't know off the top of my head. So then Ashfield Street, you see we're basically on Ashfield Street, the water main is okay. We're not replacing the water. The sewer is okay. The red that you see are those are um drain lines that we're gonna be replacing that we feel. They're corrugated metal pipe. And it's now's the time to replace it based upon their age. Then we'll go down Ashfield Street. Um, actually, we're not replaced. Obviously, we did a sidewalk um as part of. CDBG project that was standing off the hill. So the sidewalk's in great shape, so it's just basically that's a road reconstruction on that part of Ashfield Street. But that means we're gonna just fill it most likely and reshape the crown and adjust all the structures. Monroe Ave, um, that one is getting a new water main and a new sewer if you look on it. And a new sidewalk, a new roadway. Um, that's probably, that sidewalk is something I like to talk about a lot. Once we get, once I get through giving my presentation. It's a narrow sidewalk.
It's a very narrow street.
Very narrow street.
Yeah.
Very, not an easy solution. Um, and then Craft Ave, Crad Ave, not Craft. Crad Ave, um, we're gonna put a new water, it's not a water main, it's a two-inch water main that we're gonna run up the street. Um, the water, the water, our house number ten and number one, they actually replaced the service there. Um, in the very near past future, not that long ago, and they need a new ser- they need a new main going up the street. And there's not a need for putting a six-inch main or an eight-inch main based upon the backup. And we reconstruct the sidewalk going up there. Um, the right-of-way ends, one of the things that we're deemed to do is. Is there a easement or some sort of defined right-of-way across the church parking lot between Crad and Monroe? And there is no document that we were able to find, so we can't do any work, you know, to improve the, you know, because everybody drives around those. There's no question about it. But the, the funds can't be spent on private property, so we're going to, we're the right-of-way's end is what we're doing. Basically, on Crad, if you go up there, it's right where the big tree is and the last telephone pole and sidewalk is.
We just filled it in a little bit. It was, yeah.
And then um on Monroe, it's, it's to the far side of, where the grass for the most part and it's past the, the rectory, the church. So that's kind of the big picture of it. Um, and what I, I have more detailed plans and we have preliminary designs, which I can go through and answer your question regarding that. But I wanted to kinda give you an overview. We've got some preliminary estimates. We can go into that if you would like at some point. So that's the, the overview.
Would we be looking at any widening on Monroe Ave?
No, so what on Monroe Ave, what I, what I've looked at doing is um taking the, the. There was a pro- there's a CDB project that was done that went up, we'll say about fifty, seventy-five feet up there. We're not gonna touch that. You can see where they pushed the road on the right side as you drive up the street a little bit to the right. What we like to do is try to go at least a foot wider to eighteen inch wider up the right side. And if we have to put, we could put a, we'll put, plan on putting a curb in on that side. No sidewalk, but a curb that, because the slope comes down. And if you walk it, there's enough room in most areas except for one section between, I believe it's house twenty-six and twenty-two. Pretty steep bank right there.
My house.
Your house, okay.
There is a garage pretty close to the road there.
There is, yep, I know. Exact- that's, that's why I said that's the only area that's, we, we will have to do some. We've done survey out there, we've done detailed survey. Once we get the final design, but it looks like I can, all I'm trying to do is gain a foot. Because the sidewalk is, we wanna put it, we have to put in a minimum four-foot wide sidewalk for ADA. It has to be five feet every two hundred feet. So what that, but that works out because you have driveways every two hundred feet. So that counts as, you know, you're five foot wide under ADA. That's how we get, instead of, you know, a lot of times he's here, I gotta put a five. You can go down there or for a certain distance, but those, I call that the utility pole provision where you can go down to um thirty inches. With the utility pole, you can make it thirty inches wide, but. So going up the left side with a sidewalk, um, between, I believe, house nineteen and fifteen or the dr- um, actually nineteen. There's a wall there with a railing on it. The options we're considering that we'd like to discuss is, you know, it's, it's, we could replace the wall, we put in a railing on it. It's about a, it's, it's, it's anywhere from zero to about five feet high, um, the wall. It's a nice grass area, um, a thought we had and then obviously this would require the owner's approval. Why not turn that into a slope and eliminate the wall? Because it's, it's got a big lawn area, but that would require an easement. The person may not want that. That's just something that I saw and looking at it and eliminating the wall and the need.
You couldn't feel the knife in the back?
Just, just for a little history, the. Where there is the slope there, the whole thing used to be a wall like that. And when I bought the house, it was, the sidewalk was caving in and so the highway department came and fixed it by just filling it in with. Sand on the, on the backside. And then it made a nice steep thing for me to have to mow from that part out.
So if you all planted with native perennials, that might be one option.
I don't need to have a wall there, um, whatever would be the, the best uh solution. The sidewalk right now is fairly well undermined.
Yeah.
Somebody moving back the truck on it and it just kind of sunk and cracked, cracked and soaked. But if it's gonna be done, it's gonna need to have work done there. And I'm not a, a, adverse to having a slope there.
One of the things.
As long as it's a mobile slope.
As long as it's planted with native perennials. Could extend the whole thing.
So that's something that, that's one of the areas that I, that requires some level, much more level of thought than just reconstructing a road. It all does, but that's one of the things I, and it's just not an, it's not ideal to have a railing and a wall along the road, but you can avoid it. If, if that can be worked out, that might be something that, you know, it's, it's just, it's basically, it wouldn't be, it would be temporary type construction easement. To allow the work. And obviously, it would require the owner's approval and understanding that it met what he needed.
I think you got that.
So I have a question. I live at twenty-six Monroe and you were talking about extending it. There's like some sort of funky ditch, like drainage ditch there, or would you? And also we have parking in front of our garage too.
Have the smaller car.
That's a long.
You may have to go to motorcycles.
I'll get you one of those e-bikes.
Right here is your, your house, right?
That's far away.
Twenty-six, right?
Twenty-six.
So this is the way, here's Monroe coming across. Um, here's your house right here and then here's your garage.
Right.
And then the right-of-way line, um, the property, the town property line is about three feet in front of your house. This is where the actual timeline is on. So what we would, we would do is, and my concern is front of your house and then the sec- next section up there. We would, that's where we would um try to push it over and I'd put like a, I call it a curb wall. It's basically a physical, instead of being eighteen inches, it's about twenty-four and thirty inches long. It looks like a, you know, it'd be like a knee-high curb wall. And that allows me to push, slide it back about a foot. Um, which would create, and create a wider feeling, feeling for the wall.
So that will go up past Joan's house and actually up towards the church, I mean up to the.
Yeah, we go, and we go from.
Right in front of the church.
Here's, here's the church right here. We go right along here.
Okay.
Right in front of Joan's house and then your, your garage.
Yeah.
And then once you get on the other side of your garage, then it's the, where the inlet is, is the drain inlet.
Yeah.
That's church property down that way.
Oh, it's the church property, okay.
We have just a small amount to the right of our garage and then it's church property.
Yeah, you got about five feet, it looks like, maybe.
Yeah.
Isn't there like a stream or something?
Yeah, so.
That's coming through here.
Yeah, so Dan knows better than me. I don't, what I've learned from Dan. Is um, so big picture, this, there's a swell that comes down here along the road and dumps into this inlet.
Right under my house.
It was under my house.
Yep, and you two are neighbors.
What number are you?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. Yep, you're right.
That's you, baby.
She's eighty-one.
Yep, I'm right on the corner.
So right down around here and then it goes here and then it goes in the, on the church property and it goes down to next to your house. And then it goes, Dan, you know where it goes after that? It eventually gets to the river, you were explaining that to me.
Yep, goes through, through our yard, crosses across uh.
But this is water off of Walker Road? It's not the brook, right?
It's, it's.
So that must dump into.
It's not the brook.
Nobody must dump, that must dump into Bray Brook?
No, it dumps into my cellar.
Raise, raise her taxes, she guys into her pool.
The brick is where that four-eight inch pipe is, is right, right here. Yeah, so, so that, that comes, that comes there. Way over here. And what's, what that's picking up is uh the water from that low area and water that oozes out of the, the slope. On the west side of Bray Road.
It's still a lot of water.
Yeah.
I had another hearing on a different issue, but there were people from Franklin behind us and they were commenting on the amount of water that seemed to come down. I assume from that same thing.
Off the top of the mountain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to go back, that's like a retaining wall? You're gonna put in a short retaining wall?
No, so I, I call, I call it a curb wall. It's just a piece of, it'll, it'll look like granite curbing that you see on a road. Except instead of being six inches, it'll be like probably twelve to eight, a very twelve to eighteen inches.
Some of that on, on north, on the State Street, uh, just before the, the lot, there's a few houses where they.
They did a curb wall.
Yep. Um, it wasn't installed right, but. They didn't have any material, any concrete on the uphill side.
There's no diebacks on it.
And so it frost kicked it down.
So, so what they probably used, and I, I don't know for fact, but usually a piece of granite is eight, seventeen to nineteen inches high. So they just lifted up and it, it's not in the ground as far as it used to be. So what we, what, when I do a curb wall, the grade is twenty-four to thirty inches. So you only see twelve to eighteen. So there's another foot in the ground, which is what you want. Because then it won't do that. And then you just, you get like, the important thing is that you concrete both sides. So it doesn't tilt forward or tilt back.
And that, what about when they, when they do plowing, snow plowing, how that will?
If you plow and you hit a granite curb.
You know it.
You won't hit it again.
No, it's a town. I'm talking about the town, not us.
Saying, I know, when it's, when the town.
Same thing.
I, I plow.
You only do it once, yeah.
Once you hit something, you hit a granite curb or you hit a cast.
No, I'm just thinking of the town, the highway crew coming down that hill, that's all, you know.
So they're, they're gonna stay away from it. I assure you that because they'll hit it once and then they won't hit it.
As the truck goes up, yeah.
So they'll be pushing it to the other side of the road probably, because you can't really push snow up over.
You can't, and right now you can't push.
They'll, they'll push to both sides, but they, they will wing on that side for that section there.
I mean, if you had the loop, the ideal thing would be to make it one way because that is such a narrow street, but you can't have that route.
Okay. Truck they use, um, they can angle to either side.
So getting back to the water, are you saying whatever you're doing, and I am not a construction person, will help? Some of us who get lots of water in their cellar?
It's not gonna take away your issue.
Will it help?
The intent is tonight to get those comments so that I can make sure it does help.
Okay.
And maybe, um, maybe at some point I could come out and take a look at your.
Oh, I would love you to come out.
So you get, you get water when it pours, when it really rains hard?
Oh, I get water when it rains.
In the spring too?
Oh, yeah.
It's not raining, you have, so you have groundwater?
Well, it depends on the water table, but most of the time there's, if it rains, I've got water in the cellar. Cause it used to, it used to be an open brook from your house to my house. And then back, whatever, sixties or seventies, when the town put in all the new lines or whatever. They closed that brook and they built a culvert behind my house. So there's piping that goes to the road from behind my house.
The, the low area there, there, there used to be a, a pipe that came to open ground.
Yeah.
Probably now it has, you know, filled in and covered the open in there so that pools. But there, I have seen this when it was working in that one. But there, I have seen this when it was working, and that one does come across and connects up to that structure that was on the corner.
And something happened in December of twenty-two, twenty-three, the day before Christmas, where we had that, what, you know, was that terrible rainstorm?
It was, it was twenty-three.
Twenty-three, and, and I got two feet of water.
Yeah.
Something, something happened. Either one of those pipes broke, or something shifted, and everything changed.
That was a significant, as you all know, it was a significant storm about that.
Yeah, and then it was never, it was never the same again.
So what, part of the goal is to get comments and then like, we'll take a look at that. I do that right there, because Dan was indicating there's a culvert. Piping is your back, yeah?
There's piping and it goes under my shed.
Yeah.
And then there's a big, I guess, whatever you cover, in front of my, in front of my porch, under my spruce tree.
Okay.
That if you take away all the crap, you probably could lift it up. And then there's piping that goes to what's going up to Crad Avenue.
Okay. That's, that's what we say, so if I can get your name and number after that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, you'll find that with, pretty much like even all the houses on School Street and Green Street, they're all in the same boat. Because even when I was up on Green Street, the water came in off the top of the hill, it came through my basement, one side and out the other. And it just did that all the way down through. So, and there were times where we could have stopped fishing in there.
Yeah, you could put the boat in the cellar.
The water tank is up there.
Yep.
I have a question on the end of Bray Road, what's your red line?
Yep. And that's, that's what we're talking about right here.
Yeah.
Here. So any of these red lines, if you go up the road, you look on the right, what's going up on the right side is this concrete cap. The grant, they're called grant, I call them granite inlets, where there's a ditch that comes along the road, like going underneath your driveway, and then it goes into there. And then it crosses through a pipe, there's a pipe going across the road. And we're looking at replacing those.
I think the one on the end is actually the brook.
Is the brook?
The brook, okay.
The last one.
The last one, yep.
Weird, Dan?
So the same thing at the bottom of the crack?
Crosses just below.
Same thing at the bottom of the crack?
Just down the hill.
And you're placing that drain?
Number thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Yep.
Isn't that the brook?
That's the, this is the brook, maybe.
Yeah, that's the brook.
Is this the brook or is the red?
That's the forty-eight inch.
Red, red line's the brook.
So this, this one right here is the brook.
What's this one? What's this black line?
That's the edge of the driveway for number thirty-three.
So the brook, that's the one, it's corrugated metal pipe and, as I said, usually at about thirty to forty years, the bottoms go out. And I haven't been inside that one yet, so.
That's just next to where there's.
We're calling to replace it.
Did you do a culvert inventory yet?
We just got that.
Another ten years.
Mike, I just got the culvert inventory from Furcog, it's sitting down on my desk.
Okay, okay.
You may not have to walk in it.
How about the walk?
Well, you can double-check it.
I will.
He wants his culvert.
He cares.
So I have a pretty significant red line in front of my house there, anyone? So what, what will that impact?
So, there's an existing, we're replacing the existing drain. Basically it goes from, this is one of those, if you go across the street, you'll see the concrete thing, if the water goes in, we're gonna replace that in this, because it's corrugated metal. Actually.
Is there a, was there a reinforced concrete crossing there for one of them? There was, I think there was two leaving that.
Yeah, well, there's, the, the one that's coming, the, the one that goes, there's one here that goes down here and then goes down Spring Street.
Okay.
That one's okay. We're not, well, going, not to Spring Street, but we're replacing those because that's corrugated metal. And this is actually, we have it as clay, this, this piece right here.
The, the one from, bring it back.
This is clay.
Yep. The, the one just to the right there that's going diagonally down the section.
It's an eight K.
Is somebody else coming?
So the highway department fixed a section of that because of.
It's, it's corrugated metal, so I wanted this replaced.
Yep, they, they only put in what you hated to.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, it's not any better than that.
Okay.
Eighty-seven was asking, so I wish.
You hear the planning need replaced up at eighty-seven?
She might be here for the planning.
So where that smaller line is, right there?
Eighty-four is it?
Oh, eighty-four, eighty-four, yep.
Yeah, we are calling for that, to make that section to be.
I'm gonna replace that.
This is gonna, we're gonna go basically about fifty, thirty to fifty-three.
And so nothing will change.
Here, no, not gonna change from eight from there, we're just gonna run in pipe. So on Crad Avenue, you know, you go to the sidewalk going up that.
Yes.
The only thing we're changing is the road surface and sidewalk going up there. At the very end is this, yeah, right where the tree is, the telephone pole. Yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna, it'll be, it will, it won't be a standard sidewalk right there, it's gonna go up. We're gonna have to follow the concrete, because that's actually, that's right where the right-of-way ends, so we're gonna tie into. We're gonna go beyond the right-of-way here a little bit, because it's just, you need to, it can work. It's not, that part is not easy, it's not gonna be last of the. Yeah, I remember I had them in church, so you, yeah, you can certainly extend as far as you can.
I've got one more thought. Dan, you remember, maybe you weren't, when water and sewer came across the brook to Bud Anderson's house, Esther Anderson's house.
Yep.
I thought I remembered that the sewer got connected from the big house to there and didn't come up the road.
Correct.
Am I right?
Yep.
Oh, look at that.
He goes down.
We came from the, down to there, and then in somehow?
And they, they wired together in the house down below, and there's been, some of the pipe got replaced when it backed up.
Backed up, yeah.
And the, the line is asbestos concrete going from down the driveway out to the road, kind of diagonally, like that, that I thought.
Then where Ann lives now, yep.
What do you know, who else remember that?
You were talking forty, forty is me.
Thirty-three.
And thirty-three.
Yep.
And I can remember when the septic and sewer came across the brook finally, and we didn't have well water in a septic.
Yeah, we show a manhole in front of thirty-two Bray, and then it kind of goes diagonally over towards thirty-three Bray.
Well, there's one drain that goes into the brook, and there's one that, there's one over here and one over there.
It's a fascinating one.
It is a fascinating spot.
One of the things that we're gonna do too, is this swale going up the hill on the right side of Bray Road, we're gonna redefine that. Just, it's kind of, it's still there in itself and forward in time, so we'll just reconstruct that for a little while.
I'm sorry, I came late. I'm just curious about traffic patterns. You just, it'll be like day's work, or you'll like, be able to pass by one lane or something, or?
Yes, and it'd be required to allow one, especially on Bray Road in Asheville.
Yeah.
They'll require, you have to keep access open one lane at a time.
Monroe Ave will be parking in your driveway.
Come on over, come for a hug, Coco.
Is there a way to enforce that folks use the stop sign at the end of Bray Road?
Oh, I watch it, go right through it.
Franklin Street.
And State Street, right out here.
Yeah.
Maybe they need a, a speed thing for start. There's a sign.
On Asheville Street, are the sewer structures to be replaced?
We, we can, let me just have them reworked and reset, we can have them replaced.
The, the clay line, I'm not worried about that, hasn't been issued, but the structures are.
Oh, actually, replace the whole structure.
The brick, they're brick structures and there's, there's no egress to them anymore.
Okay.
That's what we did on State Street, where we placed the structures, we left the pipe.
While they're doing this, can they take the no parking here?
And then just put in enough PVC to tie it on.
There's never a threat, no one parking there.
A lot of that clay is a vintage that they use, but you may not.
I don't see why not.
I think that could happen outside of this.
I'm sure that'll probably, they'll probably be pulling it anyways while they're doing the work there, so.
Take down the signs that aren't necessary.
There must be all the stop signs, because nobody stops in here.
They are necessary. You've only had them there for five years, we didn't stop before.
Why should we now?
And we don't, so we don't.
No, but it's, it's like out front here, when you put the signs down there, of course that's state, that's not us, but they put them up here. So at least it gives you a chance to get off the bridge, you know, at least, that was supposed to be, but they, now they're paying back. And one car stops, now two of them go and.
It's a dysfunction junction.
It is, you'll never get off a bridge if they're coming up from, you know, it's good.
I don't think they can see you coming off the bridge.
No, no.
Unless they think to.
And then we have Clint's favorite, and that's the one turned on to Clement Street, if you watch the bump out.
Yeah.
I roll over that granite curbing almost every time in my truck.
And they do coming up Asheville Street, coming the curve to go up by Bray Road, they cut it too short since you put in the new sidewalk. If I'm on the porch, I go, oh, there goes another tire.
Probably more input than the. You're, you're in possession, there's more to say about signs than we do.
Waller, isn't it?
That's all local. I'm curious about the water lines, is just that they're old and need updating, or?
Yeah, like that, Rebecca indicated that the water made of the road says it's over a hundred and twenty years ago.
That's it?
So we have.
She said it's over.
So will we lose water during the transition?
No, you won't lose water. So unless, unless something, unexpected happens, you will always have one.
But you know, there's the brook.
We'll take baths.
We'll come to my cellar.
We'll go to your cellar for some baths.
Nineteen fifty-seven is when I got water and sewer.
That was the year I got born.
Bill looks like he has a question.
I'm, I'm trying to formulate it, but the, at, at the intersection of Crad and Asheville Street there, the kind of, what is it, the west end of the red line is a manhole cover, I guess. And on top of the catch basin, and the storm sewer runs across into the swale next to Sharon and Georgia's house at seventy-five there. And all that water basically just saturates that big swale in the, in the churches, the bottom end of the sledding hill there. Right, but.
There's a pipe that continues down through there.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, right, because there's that concrete top where the, I think the foxes live in there.
And the pipe goes down that swale and it crosses Monroe.
That's, okay, that was the piece of it that I wasn't seeing. And then there's an outlet on your side of Monroe.
It, it goes under the road on Monroe Avenue, the edge of our property. It goes through Linda Rollins' yard, and then it goes across Franklin Street, and then connects up down near Elm Street on the other side.
And that broke last year, remember? There was a bubbling out just halfway down, round housed.
Kaiser.
Yeah, yeah. Remember? You remember? Okay.
So that, that catch basin that the, you know, they had there by Crad Avenue, is that going to be replaced?
Based on what I'm hearing today, after I go visit, I'm, yeah, I know that, I know the one, I've seen the one down here.
Because I think the one you're talking about, pools and water, if we have heavy rain, it's like a little pond there.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, so.
Instead of George and Sharon.
Yeah, we live at seventy-three there, and I'm wondering if the elevation of that intersection could wind a few inches lower. I guess that's basically the, in terms of my own selfish water management need there, that it could be. I don't know if that can be done, and if the sidewalks are remaining in place, you know, would make that step bigger. But even if the, yeah, if the drainage, if the catch basin was a little bit lower, it would maybe drain the water in that intersection faster and send it on its way.
Do you get water down the driveway at all, or?
Well, it doesn't, there's only about, there's like seven inches of fall between the road and the floor in our basement. And the, you know, and there's, there's no, yeah, so the garage, the driveway doesn't drain very well. And, yeah, so.
What we can, what I will do, say we'll do definitely, we'll do at least a double, a double catch basin.
Just more volume.
Yeah, it's, it causes, the pipes in the ground, because you have the capacity, it's the, if the catch basin covers, it can't take, it can only take so much. And then, as you know, if there's leaks on them, they take nothing, but if you double it.
Big pump.
Just get a catch base, if one catch base, there's a double cover.
And that, I mean, that's a, just a manhole cover, it's not a grate in the middle of the road, I guess, is that typical?
There's, there's sewage there, a sewage manhole where the sewer makes a turn.
Yep.
Under the road.
Yeah, there's like, there's two, there's two, two manhole covers, one's drain, one's sewer.
Gotcha, okay, and they're marked on the top.
Okay.
Thanks.
The treatment plant has money in this year's budget to get a, a water system. And, you know, not too much time that would be available for checking the drainage pipe. And we could do, do an inspection on from here across. Find out if it's pipe or if it's stone culvert. We'll do, so depending on the access, they might be able to do something up there too.
Where's that coming?
I'm gonna get somebody motivated to do some procurement.
Okay.
The, the money is already in this budget, so it's, the money's there.
Question, Bill. So the black hatch marks on Monroe, that's sidewalk? And that's the only road, like, planned to get any?
This Monroe, and then we're gonna replace this sidewalk. There's actually no, there's not a hatch on it, it's.
So, but nothing on Bray or Asheville. So do we have to have sidewalk, is it required by grant?
Nope, not required by grant. But, you know, you have sidewalks here, that's where we're replacing sidewalks where there is sidewalks.
Okay.
It's only partial.
I mean, I don't know, could it be road? Would it be better? I don't know what's better.
I agree. I don't think we need a sidewalk.
I like sidewalks for my kids.
That's gonna walk down the road.
Yep.
So I've done that in many, I put in miles of sidewalks in these subdivisions, and they walk down, but people don't even use it, they walk down the road because it's easier to talk in.
Well, there's your parking on a sidewalk.
I'm just wondering.
That's a point of discussion, we don't have to put a sidewalk.
It's not like Monroe goes anywhere, so it's not a safety.
I'll just play Little Devil's advocate, it does go to the church. And do people walk to church?
Ninety percent of, ninety percent of people who go to church go Asheville Street and, and turn, and they go.
It's craft, and then they come down our street.
And we have a neighbor behind us who does walk home in the road, so I, well, right now the sidewalks.
Unless the weather's good and she walks through our yard.
And I mean, right now the sidewalks are so bad, that may be part of the reason why, but I just wonder if we need them.
Most people just walk in the road.
With the amount of people that are walking on Bray Road with no sidewalks, you can have no sidewalks.
Just give us a little more width, maybe.
It would give, it would give width, that is a narrow, that, I mean, coming out of the church and heading down that way, it, it's narrow. And if someone's parking out there, which, you know, it's, it's tough.
Right, it, yeah.
It's almost like going through Bridge Street and shoving inside there, gotta go around a truck sticking out.
Like the amount of traffic.
Yeah, really.
Mostly Sundays.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't see people swarming down from the church on foot.
No, no, no. We Catholic like to ride.
I noticed.
You noticed?
How, how does that get decided? I don't care if we have sidewalks.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. Maybe just make sure your police chief is cool about that concept, it's a public safety thing, isn't it usually, for many towns?
Right now they're more dangerous, the sidewalks.
Oh, I mean, I'm not really arguing the point, I'm just saying that sometimes I, when I talk with communities, it's just like, oh, I'm like, yeah, the comfort level. I think the bits the board. I think the bits, the board, and the community's decision ultimately, to project.
It, it would have a lot to do with widening that street a little bit, and it's, you know.
That might be a question, just to reach out to the police chief.
Yeah, yeah.
Get his two cents on it.
And check with her, too, on is it public safety, I mean, if, no, there'd be more room for the fire trucks to go and take.
There would be more room.
Yeah, yeah, would actually be more, it'd be better.
Especially if cars are parked on both sides of the street, which is when it gets concerning.
You still wouldn't be able to have cars parked on both sides of the street. It would give you plenty of room for any emergency vehicle to get through, if the vehicle was parking on a little bit of what is now the sidewalk.
We could pull the no parking sign off Ashfield Street and. Move it over to Monroe.
Wouldn't those sidewalks encourage more on-street parking and create a bigger problem?
I doubt it. I think it's a matter of if people have driveways, you can use them, they do.
Yeah, but that, that street is pretty full of on-street parking currently.
Right, that's because I think they're.
I think it'd be more convenient for more people.
There's several houses with many cars.
Right, right.
There's houses with more than one apartment.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see it increasing in number, people, because unless they have more people moving in with more cars, but it just means.
I mean, I think that would just be something, just putting up no parking and figuring out which side of the street to have no parking on.
Just parking on one side of the street.
I really, yeah, I think, I really, I can see it working, you know.
So right, right now, like in front of your house, there's not much curb reveal, it's only, you know, two or three inches. Do people just pull up and park on the sidewalk?
No, no, they go on my side of the street.
Can you have, we've got a lot of room.
Six inch vertical granite curb in there.
Right.
All of a sudden, it's, it's, that road's gonna feel a lot tighter.
Right, I don't.
Even though I can make it exactly the same or six inches wider, it's gonna feel.
Oh, yeah, if people park on our side, they tend to park up on the sidewalk above our driveway, where we can barely call it a sidewalk.
Yeah, that'd be on.
I think that's the conversation you need to continue, the people who live on that street, really, you know, and that we can find out from the police, and we can, you know, legalities, and, yeah.
Maybe ask the fire chief.
It's a great idea if a person uses that street, like, I myself come down usually that way, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I put it, because from grant writing experience, people's gut reaction to the sidewalk is safer. They don't know the community, they're just reading your grant application. So to have, have the feedback that says, this is our neighborhood and we don't, and the police said, they're, I'm familiar with it, and can support that, and say, yep, we understand, and it's not gonna be a problem.
We could probably provide many photographs of people walking in the middle of the road.
Well, it's, someone from Boston say, aren't they safer? Who's reading your application, aren't they safer on a sidewalk, you know? And so you have to just kind of build the case, yeah, we vetted this, everybody's cool with it, we like this idea.
That's what I'm saying, we, we gather more, it can't just be, you know, yeah.
Here's just another thought, you could just put a no curb, do a concrete five, four-foot wide sidewalk, flush. Road, so it gives someone, it gives a, it says, okay, here's where you should walk. And I, I bet you most people will start walking on the walkways, that are more, more apt to walk on that than if there's a curb there. You know, the, the safety side is now I've taken that curb away, so if someone's coming down the street, in theory, if they hit the curb, they pounce on.
Right.
But that would give you, you know, an impression, you know, here's a, here's a walkway. And it might, it might set you up, can't park on this side, there's a walkway on this side. Not to say people won't, well.
I think a curbless walkway would be more.
So, so you, you'd have some, some elevation change to hold to the water in the street.
Well, we, we, we'd put the, we'd put the, I might put like a three percent cross slope on the sidewalk, to keep it in the, like, create a gutter line.
Okay.
I know what you're saying, it's, I want to keep it flush because we don't want the plow, and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the thing I've done, we could just put the curb flush, and then the sidewalk flush, and just, you know, try to, we'll have to work, work on the drainage. Otherwise, you don't want it all coming down your driveway.
I think that's, can give you something to talk about your next Monroe party. I'm just trying to help you out and get a party going, so.
Is there any estimate on how long this will take?
So first, there has to be, the intent here is for the town to, to, to create a design, and then apply for a grant, correct me if I'm wrong from speaking out there. And it's, this, the cost to do all this work is around two point two million, so that far exceeds any, which you can get for a CDB grant. So it would be, this project would have to be phased, and we have, at a time, we have to decide what, what you do first, and what you, what you apply for, what the limits are that you can get done.
Is it gonna raise our house taxes?
No. I mean, the only thing it could raise is if we're appropriating a budget to, to pay for it, then.
I don't think it's gonna upgrade the neighborhood so much that the assessors will come back and say, wow, but I'm not sure, that's really not my.
Just one point, I, I'm not opposed to having the sidewalk, but I kind of like it for my kids, so I say, you walk there, you know, and we walk on the sidewalk. But I can do anything, it's okay.
Might be a reason to think of having it be flush.
Yeah, because then they understand we don't walk in the road. I mean, just because they're little, but sometimes the bushes are far, so I tell them, okay, walk around the bush, because I want them to get ticks or something, but.
Any other?
You ready to kick us out?
Anything else?
I'd like to follow up about the grant application part. I thought from my meeting in May that there was this pool of money that was left over from the other project to fund this project.
It, it's fun, it's funding this design process, hiring Mike to come in and design it. And so you'll have something ready to go use for a grant application, because usually, the ones that get funded have designs done, and the work we're doing tonight would be creative, yeah.
The problem is, it just seems like, you know, we all know that, we live here, and all the water coming off the hills, it involves so much more. I live in Elm Street, and we did part of that, and we get it at the Upper Elm, which we're gonna do for the last four years, but other things have superseded it, and it should. But now, it's come to the point, that's gonna take engineering now, before, just to hard top, and my cellar gets wet, everyone's cellar gets wet up there. It's unfortunate, I know, I woke up one time and it was up to my knees, and had to replace a forty-dollar border for this and that. But it, it, now it doesn't happen as much as we've been able to put some swales and stuff in our yard, but I know, I understand, I know just what you're dealing with. I think everyone in Buckland and Shelburne, when, when you say the majority of houses get water.
Shelburne, not so much, they've got a different topography and they've got.
Yeah, a little bit, they do.
Subsoil.
Yeah.
They've got better drainage on that side.
Yeah, we've got, we've got clay and, and, yeah.
Ledge.
And ledge, I can't forget that, too. Boulders, yes, sir.
Yeah, so this is, this is the first phase of it.
Yeah.
Is, is getting your, getting your design done, and then, then we can start applying for, for the CDDG grants, or if there's other.
Whether there's other funding that's coming along, yeah, that's right. So I think Mike, probably in a month or so, have another meeting, where you're maybe taking all this input and coming back with a design, and, you know, we let everybody know. We come back and see where Mike's taking the next step after he does some more investigation.
Give you a chance to get home to your houses, too, and look at your yard, oh, yeah, and really, seriously, it's, Peggy told me about hers, anyway, it's already having a, oh, back in the middle of the field.
Yeah, there's a cul, there's a culvert, there's piping that goes to the road, and it goes under, the piping goes under my shed, through the front yard. There's another big metal thing there, and then to the road.
Across the street?
Yeah, across the street, across the field, which I think.
Yeah, across the field, then there, there's another catch basin there, that we, which is in tough shape.
It's going down, goes to your yard, just keeps going down.
Finally hits the river.
Works its way down.
You guys setting your November meeting schedule? That's on your agenda tonight, okay. Yeah.
With the holiday being the eleventh.
Yeah, okay, so maybe.
That's the second Tuesday, holiday.
Yeah. Yeah, because the other, next one is right before Thanksgiving, and that's probably not, just, you're gonna work all that out.
A special town meeting in the middle.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk, and come up with a good date for every, all three of us, and.
Yeah.
Cool, okay.
Thank you for sharing the designs.
Yeah, thank you.
Say, the input, thank you, people live there, yeah.
I heard your email address, which I can pass on to him.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can get you Peggy's contact info.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Put that on my list.
Thank you.
Put me on your list. And I'll get it like a monster.
Who's coming over?
When it gets to page two, if nobody, nobody put their emails on here.
He's excited.
He should be.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Of course, of course.
You know, when you don't live in a spot, when you don't live in a spot in town, you don't know. I, you lived on Green Street, I know that all there is, things, my relatives there and everybody else, I know what goes on in Elm Street, that's for sure.
Want to get my.
Absolutely.
Mike, could I give you my, I would love just no more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. You left them there long enough. No, no, they can stay right there.
I'm just gonna leave for Pam to, to, for them tomorrow, I haven't had one.
All right, we'll move on to our.
Oh, I've already had my share, more than my share.
We'll move on to our town administrator's report.
Oh, town administrator, that's, that's me.
That's you.
Getting back here, okay, um, so we covered the special town meeting. We have filed an expression of interest for the next round of MVP grant funding. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. They will be scheduling a session to meet with us, me, Allison Cornish, who's still doing our climate coordinator job, to discuss the project in more depth. This is the project we applied for last round, and we didn't receive the funding. This is where we worked with GZA, Rosalie Starvish, and her team on identifying the climate resiliency projects, since we talked about it, I think, one of the last meetings. This would be the Clessen Brook.
Oh, yeah.
Clessen River Farm, the project behind their property to kind of shore up the land. And then, across from the Buckland Rock, that stream bank is eroding a lot. So those are the two priority projects that we're looking to, to fund with that round of grant funding. We have awarded the salt shed paving bid to J.S. Ray in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, they will be starting November sixth. Anthony's working with them apparently on getting that done. Anthony keeps getting the area really prepped and ready to go, and then we get a lot of rain. So he's back out there.
With the grader, the big grader doing it.
Yeah, so that is going on, starting, hopefully we'll get that in under the wire before all the paving plants shut down. And yes, we do need to figure out what the meeting schedule looks like in November, only because the eleventh is the holiday, which would have been our typical second day, you know, our typical meeting day would have been the eleventh. We now have scheduled, we're working on trying to do a sewer commissioners meeting on the tenth, so whether that, maybe you want to do a meeting following this, or before the sewer, well, not really, because I think we're looking at maybe a five-thirty start. We could adjust that time a little bit to do it either right after, if you wanted to do that, or if you want to pick just a different random day.
What are we, do we need to have something?
Well, Linda was asking, too, in terms of her follow-up, I mean, there's always, there's always something that comes up, whether you wanna, the fourth Tuesday would be the twenty-third, which, that's the week of Thanksgiving. I don't know if anyone, a twenty-fifth, rather, not twenty-third, twenty-fifth, if you wanted to hold off and just do one meeting in November. I don't know if anyone's going away. I mean, I, I don't know of anything pressing right now, other than, you know, we are having a special town meeting on the eighteenth.
I think we just wait until the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
We, we don't really have, you know, I mean, Mike's gonna need time anyways to do that plan, so.
Okay, so we'll just do the.
I mean, you're only talking two weeks, so.
Although typically you would meet prior to the special town meeting to decide, before we do the motion warrant, for you to decide if you're in support or not of the motions, am I correct in that? I know the finance committee is meeting on the third, I don't know if you want to have a very quick, maybe a very quick meeting on like the tenth, if we're having a sewer commissioners meeting that night, anyway, maybe meet real quickly before that. And just have that be the only item on your. Okay.
So it's a Monday night?
Yes.
It is. And I will, so tentatively five-thirty for that, so if you want to say five o'clock, like your usual. That, that's a plan. Okay. Okay, and that's all I have for now.
All right, public comment. Long time no see.
I've been at home, I've been ill, but now I'm back, and I want to thank you, Pam, in the Comcast table, for bringing you live tonight. Because I like to watch both Shelburne and Buckland, because we're so united in our political and financial obligations.
So it's all working?
It is, tonight it was. That's why I want to say yes, you're right.
So we finally get it all up and working, and now you come to the meeting.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to you guys who figured it out. Hey, this, thank you's are important.
Well, we've had some techno, technology glitches, our IT company came in, there was evidently an issue with one of the routers, whether that had anything to do with it, I don't know, but. Yay.
Hey, yeah, that's why I say, hey, guys.
Keep our fingers crossed, that is, continues.
And I'm here for another reason as well, and that is, up in, upper Buckland, there's a veterans monument. Well, I read the book Butler, and this is why I'm here, because after reading the book Butler, I thought, you know what, I've been way too quiet. And as a female veteran, thank you, Bill, in the upper Buckland, there's only about four names of women from Buckland who are listed. Do you know who they are? I'm one of them, I'll give you a hint, and there's maybe two or three other women. I know their names, although I don't know where they are today. I'm eighty years old, so who knows where they are. And it seems like, since I moved back here, I was born in Buckland, and I moved back here twenty-two years ago. All throughout the last twenty-two years I've been back here, and going to the VA, and participating in VA activities and services, women are rarely recognized in the town of Buckland. So I would suggest that maybe the powers that be could put something together to honor those four women, who, their names are there, and maybe they're here, remember them. But it seems to be absent. Hello, so, let me think a minute. So I would say that the VFW, which is the most active facility around here, is veterans of foreign wars. And the veterans of foreign wars has a policy that only veterans of foreign wars who served overseas can be a member. Mostly women who served stateside, except for nurses, and so women who, who supported the Vietnam War, and with a backbone in this country, stateside. We are not considered recognized in the veterans of foreign wars because we did not serve out of country. So nurses, of course, were sent over under a different kind of umbrella, so there's many. So nurses, of course, were sent over under a different kind of umbrella. So there's many women throughout Orange, and I'm sorry, I lived in Orange, California for forty years. I said, I lived in Orange County. So in Franklin County, women who have served are really dismissed, not intentionally, but they're not recognized either.
You, Doug March.
I beg your pardon?
Doug March, he lives in...
I am part of him.
Yeah, Doug March lives in Shelburne, and he is, I think he's leading the, uh... He's the president of, of that, and he might be a person to call and contact and... And, and state what you're feeling, you know. He's a good guy.
I thank you for that comment. However, I think because the monument is in the town of Buckland, in upper Buckland, it is not a VA issue.
I'm not even...
No, no, it's the VFW. He's the commander for the, for the Shelburne Falls VFW.
Oh, I'm not arguing that point. They, they have a right to make their own policies. I was just suggesting to the public who is listening that why we, women are not included because we did not serve on foreign soil. That's their privilege to dismiss us. I, I'm not arguing their position. What I'm saying is that in the future, when there is a parade, more women who serve, whether it be any place in Franklin County, be invited to participate in the parade.
You always are.
Yeah.
Always.
I, I don't know that.
Yep.
That's why I think, that's why I mentioned Doug's name. I mean, you know, you're saying this, but even if you were, he's a good guy. He's a good guy, Doug March. And, um, maybe they're unaware of this too. I mean, you don't understand, this is new. You're, you're saying that way. I've always thought women in service, I got several nieces that are in the service right now, in the military, yes, they have. And I, not from Buckland, but from other places around Mass, and I, I guess I've never thought of it that way, you know, I guess I haven't noticed, uh, but you're right. Vietnam walls and stuff or all that, uh, that's for ones that didn't make it too, but, uh, I'm just thinking, maybe something can be done through here, is what I'm saying, you know? If you gave you a no answer, there's nothing we can do, then...
I think with the Memorial Day parades and, and things that we do, we would never exclude you.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. Trust me, I'm not, and all due respect, I am not suggesting that. I am just suggesting that perhaps they, you don't have control of these entities in Asheville or wherever they are, not to be all inclusive to females. And, and this is, it's not really a select board problem. I was just trying to make, trying to make you aware that the entities who are in control are pretty dismissive of the female contribution.
Or, you can say dismissive or unaware. I mean, I, I, no, you just start, my eyes to think of it, oh, yeah, I, I guess I didn't realize that. I'm thinking of the, that, so, yeah. I don't know, maybe there should be a place to, names should be on a board, a wall or something, you know? I mean, they do that with a lot of things, so, I'm not sure. But I would go through with him and see if you can get the support of the VFW and support of him as the commander of all the veterans. He's a commander of, not just VFWs, he, there is neither...
I think just, I think of this post.
Of this post, yeah.
He may have a higher...
He may have a higher one at, yeah, they have it in Greenfield. I mean, maybe, I don't know. At least maybe aware of it. I guess I hadn't thought about that. And maybe they haven't. Doesn't mean they're, they shunned you or anything like that. They just may have forgotten, yeah.
I do not feel shunned. I feel very proud that I served in military.
And I'm glad you did, thank you. Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, I hear what you're saying, it's, things could be missing some.
I brought it to your attention, and quite frankly, I, I just thought maybe to speak out would be balanced, so, here we are. I am what I am.
No.
It is what it is. God bless all of you, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
On behalf of the select board, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, any other public comment? None, all right. Announcements and upcoming meetings, um, so...
Well...
Apparently now we're told that we're meeting on, uh, our next select board meeting will be on November tenth at five PM. Which will be here, followed by a sewer commissioners' meeting at five-thirty.
I will at some point be reaching out, um, with a classification hearing. That will also be something coming up in the not-so-distant future. I think this time it may be that Clint might not be able to be there, if they're doing it during the day, just to accommodate the fact that we have a new assessor. Who, I don't know if she'll be able to be here in the evening for that, and we're also trying to get this in fairly quickly because we have a new tax collector. So we're trying not to draw the process out any longer than we can. We're just trying to wait, we're waiting on our accountant to get the final numbers in and the recap. And once he, I think he may have even finished today. Once I have that information, I will probably reach out to see if there's any availability...
I'm pretty flexible.
On a, on a morning, um, maybe even when the select, when the assessors meet next, which I think is November thirteenth. Um, so that may be a date for the classification hearing, but again, it, I know you've all been through them before, so...
Right.
I don't anticipate it being anything unusual.
No, or, or any changes in the process, so...
Right.
Yeah, just let me know.
Will do.
Um, another, the special town meeting will be, um, at the Buckland Town Hall, November eighteenth. And that's gonna be, that's five-thirty or six-thirty?
There's five-thirty in here.
Uh, five-thirty, no, six-thirty.
Yeah, six-thirty.
Where did you see five-thirty?
You've got it written on our agenda.
Oh, sorry, six-thirty.
That's nice.
It's six-thirty, Larry.
It's going to be...
Scratch that out.
It's at six-thirty and not five-thirty.
To try to encourage as much participation as possible, people getting out of work, et cetera.
Yep, that's okay.
Um, and then our other November meeting is the twenty-fifth, um, at five PM. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second day.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, and have a good evening.
Do they wanna come in here?
Six-thirty-six.
I can ask them.
I know, my, my government law was... You need help, you need me help?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it. You know, what if I, if I don't do it, I lose it.
I know.